Good morning to our June 11, 2024, Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting. First, those that are able, please join us in the Fledge of Allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda is the Agenda Review. Mr. Meyer, please.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
I move the agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the agenda discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The agenda is approved as printed. Item number three, Tab 1, is Judicial Ditch 23 Public Hearing. We've got a series of four public hearings, each with their own agendas and their own complements. So let's start with the Agenda Review with that, please, Bob.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the Judicial Ditch 23 Hearing.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Agenda is approved as printed. Purpose of today's hearing is to present the viewer's report and to receive comments from all parties interested in Judicial Ditch 23 redetermination of benefits proceeding. The order of business for this hearing is as follows. Staff will review the jurisdictional documents, we will hear from the appointed viewers, and then we will open the hearing for public comments. I'll ask Craig Ostenson, Blue Earth County Drainage Staff, to review the jurisdictional documents. Morning, Craig.
Morning, Greg.
Morning, Greg.
Hearing notices were mailed on May 13, 2024. Landowner Information Meeting was held on May 28, 2024. Notice was posted for this hearing outside the Blue Earth County Historic Courthouse located at 204 South 5th Street, Mankato, Minnesota. Notice of the public hearing was also published in Mankato Free Press on May 21, 28, and June 4, 2024. This is the final hearing for the Judicial Ditch 23 redetermination of benefits. Background, Judicial Ditch 23 watershed has approximately 839 benefited acres and is primarily located in Sterling Township. On May 7, 2019, the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority ordered a redetermination of benefits. The engineers, viewers, were appointed in order to create an updated benefits and damages listing in the viewer's report for Judicial Ditch 23. A copy of the draft viewer's report for the redetermination of benefits was submitted to Blue Earth County Drainage Management Staff on February 26, 2024. Today's hearing allows the appointment of viewers to provide for their explanation for the drafted viewer's report for Judicial Ditch 23 and provide it in the opportunity for public comment for the proceeding. Action requested, we request the Drainage Authority to accept the drafted final orders updating the Judicial Ditch 23 viewer's report and benefits of damages reports.
Okay, thank you, Craig. We've heard the jurisdictional documents. It would be appropriate for a motion and a second to accept those in the legal record?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. Jurisdictional documents are inserted in the legal record. At this point, I will ask our viewers to come forward, identify themselves, and review the report. Ron, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Ron Rinquist. I'm one of the viewers appointed to do the redetermination of benefits on Judicial Ditch Number 23. The other viewers were Dan Ruby, Bill Anderson, and Lance Roberts. Ditch Number 23 was originally established October 25, 1917, constructed in 2018. There are no improvements that have been done since the establishment, and there are no records at this point of a major repair. The system provides an outlet for lands in Sections 1 and 12 of Shelby Township and in Sections 5, 6, 7, 8, and 18 of Sterling Township. A redetermination of benefits is a mass appraisal to determine the difference in value of a piece of property because the ditch system exists, assuming that it's in a reasonable state of repair. This is done by establishment of various classes of land. Values for the lands are established based on market value difference and supported by an income approach to appraisal or what the additional agricultural income potential is. We have four classes of land that are used generally in redeterminations. A-lands are lands that without artificial manipulation would have standing water, cattails, and have no real agricultural value. B-lands would be seasonally flooded but usable for hay or pasture. The big change in acres typically from the 1917s today are in the C and the D acres. C-lands are those lands which are typically being pattern tiled now but always were farmable. And D-lands are the upland acres that don't acre by acre need artificial drainage but do benefit by the drainage of the adjacent properties. We do an analysis then of a before and after condition, assuming that the ditch systems would have adequate or recommended drainage capacities. Once that is done, we establish benefit values for each, potential benefit values for each class of land. We reconcile the benefits through the market sales analysis as well as through the income approach as to the change of income in a property. What we have determined then, based on the hydraulic capacities, even with the recommended system, is that the A acres will seasonally occasionally flood and will only produce 92% of their optimum production. B-lands, 95. C's and D's, because they don't have surface ponding, will produce 100% of our estimated optimum. We've used 210 bushel as our optimum estimated corn yield at $4.50 a bushel, soybeans at 60 bushels at $12 a bushel for a potential income annual, average annual income of $832.50. We do the same analysis with expenses. Expenses do not include cash rent or land value and do not include full equipment depreciation because the equipment is owned whether you're farming wet or dry ground. So our expenses were $381.10. You take the potential, adjust it for the reduction depending on the ponding over the 100-year rainfall cycle, subtract production costs, then we subtract from that the previous income because those certain properties did have income even as hay and pasture or as a reduced yield on the C's and D acres. We then allowed $1,000 an acre for the cost of pattern tile these acres in order to meet that optimum production. Shows us that there is an average annual increase in cash flow. In order to match current sale prices, we've capitalized that change of income for 25 years at a 1% return on value. To determine our benefit values, we've applied 75.90 for As, 51.30 for Bs, 27.90 for Cs, and 9.20 per acre for the D's. Because these systems were built early in the 20th century, they do not necessarily meet current design standards. What we do then is we make adjustments for two items to determine what the actual recommended benefit is. We do a hydrologic adjustment, which on ditch 23 shows that the A acres are only receiving 50% of their potential. The B's 75, the D's 90, and the C's 90, and the D's 95% of their potential. We then also make adjustment for location. If you're not directly on the tile, you'll have an additional cost in order to get your water to the public drainage system. So there's a proximity adjustment which is intended to leave enough dollars so that you can get your water to the public drainage system to utilize as an outlet rather than causing damage to your neighbors and ending up with that liability. We do charge a tile benefit for those properties that have public tile. The tile benefit is estimated at $3 per foot. It's estimated that it provides an outlet to that property independent of what size tile it is. The size increase is only to accommodate the other waters from above your property, not to give you necessarily the full capacity of that individual tile system. But we feel there is a benefit to those properties, even an additional benefit to those properties that have public tile on them. Road benefits is the only other thing that we've looked at. Road benefits are the only place that we use the cost approach because roads are not bought or sold nor do they generate any revenue. So the only way to look at that is what would the current cost of construction be if the drainage system had not been put in place? So we look at a reduction of maintenance, of construction and maintenance costs to the roads and apply that to the same type of analysis for the ABCD acres as we do with the lands. Okay, with that, the original report was submitted. Landowner meetings were held about two weeks ago. There were some individual changes that would be, we would recommend. The Harrelson-Fillis Trust properties, we would recommend for parcel 4922014004 that those have been tiled out of the watershed and no longer would receive any benefit from the ditch system. We've also looked then at the Riley property and the Jurgensen properties. Our fifth, boy, that print's small. 512340013 and 51230640014. The surface water on those two parcels still runs into the drainage system, but they are tiled out, so we recommend a reduction of 50% of the D value to those acres that we had originally, surface water only coming in. With those changes, it's our recommendation that the benefits be $1,658,204.32 to the lands within the watershed and $79,597.75 to the roads for a total benefit of $1,734,802.7. And we have 834 benefited acres within the watershed. Those are the agricultural acres benefited and do not include the road right of ways.
Okay, thank you for that report. And next, any clarifying questions on the viewer's report?
None for me, Mr. Chair.
Seeing none, at this time, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and there is a five-minute time limit. County Administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you know when you've used the allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. Is there anyone wishing to make comments at this time? Please come to the podium. And I will ask, is there anyone wishing to make comments on Judicial Ditch 23 redetermination of benefits? And I will ask for a third and final time, is there anyone wishing to make comments for JD 23 ROB redetermination of benefits? Hearing and seeing no coming forward, no comments, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing and ask if there's further questions from the board.
I have no questions, Mr. Chair.
At this point, it would be appropriate to get a motion to accept the drafted findings in order approving and adopting the viewer's report and benefits and damages report.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried. The report and benefits and damages will be approved. This concludes the JD 23 redetermination of benefits hearing. The next item on our agenda, item number four, Tab 2, is the JD 39 public hearing. Bob, the agenda, please.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda.
Okay, hearing no changes. It would be appropriate to approve the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The agenda is approved as printed. Purpose of this hearing is to present the viewer's report, receive comments from all parties interested in the Judicial Ditch 39 redetermination of benefits proceeding. Order of business for this hearing is as follows. Staff will review the jurisdictional documents, we'll hear from the viewers, and then open the hearing for public comments. I will again ask Craig Ostenson, Blue Earth County Drainage Staff, to review the jurisdictional documents.
Okay, the hearing notice was mailed on May 13, 2024. Landowner Information Meeting was held on May 28, 2024. Notice was posted for this hearing outside the Blue Earth County Historic Courthouse located at 204 South 5th Street, Mankato, Minnesota. Notice of the public hearing was also published in the Mankato Free Press on May 21, 28, and June 4, 2024. Judicial Ditch 39 watershed has approximately 1,373 benefited acres and is primarily located in Sterling Township. On May 7, 2019, the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority ordered a redetermination of benefits. The engineer and the viewers were appointed in order to create an updated benefit and damages listing in the viewer's report for JD 39. A copy of the draft viewer's report for the redetermination of benefit was submitted to Blue Earth County Drainage Management Staff on February 26, 2024. Today's hearing allows the appointed viewers to provide their explanation for the drafted viewer's report for Judicial Ditch 39 and provide an opportunity for the public comment for the proceeding. Action requested, we request the Drainage Authority accept the drafted final findings in order updating the Judicial Ditch 39 viewer's report and benefits and damages report.
Okay, you've heard that. Heard the jurisdictional documents. At this time, it would be appropriate to put those in the legal record and ask for a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. Jurisdictional documents are inserted into the legal record. At this point, we'll ask the viewing staff to come up and review the viewer's report. Ron, please read. Introduce yourself for the record.
All right. My name's Ron Rinquist. I'm one of the viewers. The other three viewers were Dan Ruby, Bill Anderson, and Lance Roberts. Blue Earth Judicial Ditch Number 39 was established September 3, 1920 and was constructed in 1921. Again, there were no improvements after the establishment, and there is no record of any major repairs. The process is still the same mass appraisal process that was used on ditch 23, and if you would like, I'd go through that again for the record. Otherwise, you can ditto it. And I think everyone here-
Everybody heard it the first time. I think we're okay. Is that okay?
That works.
Yep, as long as it indicates in the record that everybody was, had that opportunity to listen to it. Okay, so we did have landowner meetings again two weeks ago. There are a number of changes from what was originally submitted. This watershed is in Sections 32, 33 of Lyra Townships and Sections 4, 5, 8, and 9 of Sterling Township. It's a relatively flat watershed and with the systems' capacities not meeting today's recommended system, there are a number of properties that were either tiled in or out of the system depending on which way that they chose to put the outlet. The Phyllis-Harrelson parcel, 4218320004, she actually tiled additional acres into the watershed because the 40 was split, and rather than secure two outlets, she brought properties into the watershed. Enrick's parcel at the outlet end was determined that although the tile does extend according to the GIS mapping into his property, actually it ends at the road and therefore his benefits were removed. Parcel 51230430002, Matske's parcel, he had tiled portions of that out of the watershed. He had provided tile maps to show that most of that, 80, was tiled out of the system. We left in 34 acres that is tiled and uses ditch 39 as an outlet yet. The Becker parcel, 51230440009, we removed that parcel because that was tiled out of the watershed. And parcel 51230440010, once again is tiled out of the watershed and was removed from the report of benefited acres. With those amendments, we have recommended benefits of $2,854,202.43 to the lands within the watershed, $106,532 for the roads, for a total benefit of $2,960,734.43.
Okay, we've heard the viewer's report. I would ask if there's any clarifying questions from the board? Can I make the comment that the importance, we've talked before about the importance of landowner meetings? I believe everybody we've talked about so far were in attendance to those landowner meetings and were able to take care of it before the final hearing. So anything you could do to remind people how important landowner meetings are, it's well worth their investment of their time. At this point, we will open it for public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment, we'd ask you to come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. You already remember that comments will be civil and respectful. There is a five-minute time limit, which will have a one-minute warning when the time is up from the county administrator. We also will restrict or limit the time to a person who remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter. And I would ask, anyone wishing to make comments, please come to the podium and state your name. For the second time, I'd ask, is there anyone wishing to make comments on Judicial Ditch 39 redetermination of benefits? And for a third and final time, I'd ask anyone wishing to make comments on JD 39 ROB. Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public portion of the hearing. Ask are there further questions from the board?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
At this point, it would be appropriate for our motion to accept the drafting, drafted findings in order approving and adopting the viewer's report and benefits and damages report as described.
So moved.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried. The drafted findings in orders is approved, and the viewer's report and benefits and damages report are adopted. At this point, this concludes the JD 39 redetermination of benefits hearing. Our next item on agenda, number five, Tab 3, is a public hearing for JD 40. And we've got the agenda in our packet. Bob, if you'd review the agenda, please?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, there are no changes to the JD 40 agenda.
Seeing no changes, is there a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
Second.
Motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried. The agenda is approved as printed. Purpose of this hearing is to present the viewer's report, receive comments from all parties in Judicial Ditch 40 redetermination of benefits proceeding. The order of business for this hearing will be the same as the previous two. Staff will review jurisdictional documents, we'll hear from the viewers, and then open the hearing for public comments. Craig Ostenson, Blue Earth County Drainage Staff, at this time will review the jurisdictional documents. Craig, please.
Okay, hearing notices were mailed on May 13, 2024. The landowner information meeting was held on May 28, 2024. Notice was posted for this hearing outside the Blue Earth County Historic Courthouse located at 204 South 5th Street, Mankato, Minnesota. Notice of the public hearing was also published in the Mankato Free Press on May 21, 28, and June 4, 2024. Judicial Ditch 40 watershed has approximately 839 benefited acres and is primarily located in Sterling Township. On May 7, 2019, the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority ordered a redetermination of benefits. The engineer and viewers were appointed in order to create an updated benefits and damages listing for the viewer's report for Judicial Ditch 40. A copy of the draft viewer's report for the redetermination was submitted to Blue Earth County Drainage Management Staff on February 26, 2024. Today's hearing allows for the appointed viewers to provide their explanation for the drafted viewer's report for Judicial Ditch 40 and provide an opportunity for the public comment for the proceedings. We request the Drainage Authority accept the drafted findings in order updating the Judicial Ditch 40 viewer's report and benefits and damages statements. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. At this point, it would be appropriate to get a motion and a second to accept the jurisdictional documents into the legal record?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and seconds, discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The jurisdictional documents will be inserted in the legal record. At this time, we'll have the viewers come forward and report their viewer's report.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. We had the same viewers, myself, Ron Rinquist, Dan Ruby, Lance Roberts, and Bill Anderson as the viewers on this. Blue Earth Judicial Ditch Number 40 was established January 8, 1923 and constructed the similar year. Once again, there's no, been, been no improvements established to the system and it's had no major repairs. System provides an outlet for lands in Sections 35 of Vernon Center Township and Sections 1, 2, 3, 10, 11, 12, and 14 in Shelby Township. The process was the same as it was for the other two ditch systems. It was a mass appraisal completed, values considered, hydraulics considered. Once again, this one is undersized and only has a 50% benefit rate for the As, 70 for the Bs, 85 for the Cs, and 95 for the D's. The report as submitted only has one recommended change. Parcel 4922104003 for Michael Dustin and Tina Daniel Riley. They tiled that land out of the watershed, so we recommend that those benefits to that parcel be removed. That gives us land benefits recommended of $3,469,880.24, road benefits of $119,432, for total benefits of $3,589,312.24.
Okay, you've heard the report. Are there any clarifying questions?
No, sir.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Comments are expected to be civil and respectful. Comments are expected to be civil and respectful. This meeting is being recorded. There is a time limit of five minutes with a one-minute warning and, and time's up. We also will restrict or limit the time allotted if they're repetitive for not relevant comments. So I would ask, is there anyone wishing to make comments on the JD forty redetermination of benefits? I'll ask anyone wishing to make comments on JD forty redetermination of benefits. And I'll ask for a third and final time, anyone wishing to make comments on judicial ditch forty redetermination of benefits. Seeing and hearing no further comments, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing and ask if there's further questions or comments from the board.
None from you, Mr. Chair.
Without any other discussion, it would be appropriate for a motion to accept the drafted findings in order approving and adopting the viewers' report and benefits and damages report.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried. The drafted findings in order is approved and we have adopted the viewers' report with benefits and damages. At this point, this concludes the redetermination of benefits hearing. I'm not sure if I, if we officially adjourned the last one now that I think of it. Do we need a motion to adjourn the hearing or is this part of the entire meeting?
I think you can just do it as a chair.
I can just adjourn, okay. So I will, this concludes the judicial ditch forty redetermination of benefits hearing. Item number six, tab number four on today's agenda is a public hearing for judicial ditch forty-five. And this has to do with redetermination of benefits. Bob, for the final time for ditches, would you review this agenda?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Okay, with no changes, appropriate to approve the agenda?
Moved to approve.
Second.
And a motion in a second, discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, the agenda is approved as printed. This hearing is to present the viewers' report, receive comments from all parties interested in judicial ditch forty-five redetermination of benefits proceeding. Order of business will be similar to the last three. We'll review jurisdictional documents. We'll hear from the viewers and then we'll open it for public comment. Craig Ostenson, Blue Earth County Drainage Staff, would you please review the jurisdictional documents?
The hearing notices were mailed on May first, twenty twenty-four. Landowner information meeting was held on May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. Notice was posted for this hearing outside the Blue Earth County Historic Courthouse located at two oh four South Fifth Street, Mankato, Minnesota. Notice of the public hearing was also published in the Mankato Free Press on May twenty-first, twenty-eighth, and June fourth. JD, JD forty-five watershed is approximately one thousand, six hundred and twenty-five benefited acres is located in Mapleton Township. A copy of the draft viewers' report for the redetermination of benefits was submitted to the Blue Earth County Drainage Management Staff on February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. On April ninth, twenty twenty-four, the Blue Earth County Authority ordered a redetermination of benefits. The engineer and viewers were appointed in order to create an updated benefits enlisted damages listing report for the viewers' report for judicial ditch forty-five. Today's hearing allows for the appointed viewers to provide an explanation for the draft viewers' report for judicial ditch forty-five and provide an opportunity for public comment for the proceedings. We requested the Drainage Authority accept the drafted findings in order updating the judicial ditch forty-five viewers' report and the benefits and damages report.
Thank you, Craig. We've heard the jurisdictional documents and the memo. Would be appropriate for a motion to accept them into the legal record?
Moved to approve.
Second.
A motion in a second, discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, the jurisdictional documents have been inserted in the legal record. Well, now I'll ask the viewer and staff to come up and review the viewers' report. Ron, thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Judicial ditch number forty-five was established in nineteen twenty-five. They are still using those original benefits. There were improvement petitions filed by Harlan Jaeger in nineteen eighty-one and again in nineteen eighty-four. The nineteen eighty-one petition was denied because there were not enough benefits. The nineteen eighty-four petition was denied because it did not have enough signatures. The system does provide an outlet for lands in sections five, six, seven, eight, seventeen, and eighteen, all in Mapleton, Mapleton Township. There was an improvement, impoundment petition for crep and easement land granted to Harlan Jaeger in section eight. And a crep wetland easement was also granted to the Schulte land in section seventeen. The viewing process we used was the same as for the other ditches other than because of these impoundments, special consideration was given to these properties. At the landowner meetings, Mr. Jaeger requested that an investigation be done looking at the hydraulic impact that these impoundments had on the system. Mr. Chuck Randall of ISG provided a report that does show that because these lands are in crep and permanent easement, there is a significant reduction of the runoff characteristics compared to it being fully tilled agricultural land. Our benefit determination to these crep and permanent easement lands considers the value change and what would have qualified for compensation under these programs if the ditch system had never been built. So what we look at is going out and saying, if there was no ditch and he wanted to enroll this in a wetland program, what would be compensatable acres? And we reduce and, and remove the benefit from those acres that would have qualified even without the ditch system in place. The ditch system did provide a drainage benefit, although it wasn't very good apparently with the petitions for improvements. It did create hay and pasture ground in its original use and conditions. That land changed value because it was drained not adequate for commodity crop, but adequate for hay and pasture. What we've done then is we valued his properties, the wet acres that would not have qualified for compensation as hay and pasture use. He sold that drainage right then as part of the easement process and was compensated for those acres that would not have qualified. So our recommendation is that the benefits be an economic change because the ditch system existed and it be valued the same as the use it would have today if it would not have been enrolled for those acres that did not qualify or would not have qualified for compensation. The hydraulic considerations, I have no real way of putting a dollar benefit because it doesn't benefit his property. It may be a benefit to the balance of the system because there is less runoff into it, but it doesn't change our recommended value to their properties. It would be something that the board may consider as, as a slight reduction in his benefits because it helps the rest of the system. But to me, the value of his property is because the ditch system was originally constructed and allowed him the right to sell that land into the program. So there's no recommended changes to that report. With that, we have the land benefits recommended of three million, two hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars, seventy-one cents. Road benefits of one hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-four, forty. For total recommended benefits of three million, three hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars and eleven cents. And sixteen hundred and twenty-five and a half benefited acres.
Okay, is there any clarifying questions on the viewers' report? Okay, at this point, we'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. Anyone that'd like to make a comment, I'd ask to come to the podium. State your name and address for the record. Comments are expected to be civil and respectful. This meeting is being recorded and ask that you observe a five-minute time limit. We will have a one-minute warning and let you know when your time is up. We may restrict comments that are repetitive or not relevant. And I would ask who would like to make comments on judicial ditch forty-five? Please come to the podium, state your name and address. Is there anyone wishing to make comments on judicial ditch forty-five redetermination of benefits report? And I'll ask one more time, a third and final time, anyone wishing to make, make comments for JD forty-five redetermination? Seeing and hearing no comments, I will close the public portion of this hearing and ask questions from the board.
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chair, but I would just like to make a comment. And Ron's explanation about the Jaeger property was very helpful. We had a good discussion with Harlan at the informational meeting. And I certainly support Ron's suggestion that we just leave that the same because he does have some benefit, as Ron pointed out. And there also, it will be some improvements or repairs that might have to be done in his section too. Then the whole ditch system would help pay for that. So I support Ron's findings on that and will support this today.
Thank you. At this point, it would be appropriate for a motion to accept the drafted findings in order approving and adopting the viewers' report and benefits and damages report.
I'll move approval.
Second.
We have a motion in a second, discussion. Any discussion, are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried, the findings in order is approved. Viewers' report with benefits and damages are adopted. At this point, this concludes the judicial ditch forty-five redetermination of benefits hearing. I will declare that adjourned.
Thanks, Greg.
Item number seven, tab number five, is the county ditch seventy-nine bid award. Ryan.
Morning, everyone.
Morning, Ryan.
Just have a quick public bid awarding for county ditch seventy-nine. Bids were solicited from multiple contractors for the approved improvement work for county ditch seventy-nine. These improvements include the installation of larger dual-wall HDPE tile for parts of the public drainage system. On May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, thirteen bid submissions were received for the improvement work. The engineer's estimate for this improvement work is five hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty cents. The thirteen submitted bids are provided in the tab, table below with the lowest quote submitted by GM Contracting Incorporated with a lump sum bid of four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and eight cents. And the highest quote submitted by Jensen Excavating and Trucking LLC at seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty cents. ISG and Blue Earth County Drainage have both worked with GM Contracting in the past on similar projects with positive results. ISG recommends awarding the project to GM Contracting Incorporated. Requested action for the county ditch seventy-nine Drainage Authority is to award the bid to GM Contracting in the amount of four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and eight cents for the approved improvement plans for county ditch seventy-nine. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
I would move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. And a second discussion.
Good bids.
Thirteen, that's.
Yeah, a lot and then good, so it's awesome.
Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, the bid is awarded. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've had a lot of drainage. Would it be appropriate that I ask for a ten-minute break? We will be back at ten forty-four, uh, nine forty-four, nine fifty-four. Math was not my strong suit.
Ten forty-four would be a long.
Ten forty-four is too long, too long a break. Nine fifty-four. Is up here or do you like the podium or whatever you would like to do?
Here seems fine.
We like you right there.
Thank you.
How's John today?
Not too bad. How are you guys doing today?
Good.
Well, we're all here. We will, we will call the meeting back to order. We're at agenda item number eight. Tab number six, Veterans Court Cooperative Agreement. Good morning, John, if you'd please identify yourself for the record.
Good morning, John Marcel, Community Corrections Director.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners. This morning I have for you the Veterans Court Contract or Cooperative Agreement. With this memo, you will see that there is a cooperative agreement between Blue Earth County Community Corrections and the State of Minnesota through the Fifth Judicial District. So this agreement is a three-year agreement from July one of twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven. We've been providing case management and probation supervision for clients that are participants in the Fifth Judicial District Veterans Court Program for a few years now. And so this agreement will allow us to continue to provide those services, both for probation and case management to those clients in the Veterans Court. The agreement is one where we essentially have participants in our Veterans Court that are from throughout the Fifth. What I'll say is probably about eighty percent of the participants in the Veterans Court are Blue Earth County residents. But as part of this agreement, we also provide some case managements to people that are coming to our Veterans Court from other counties. And so you might have a participant that's joining us from Brown County or Fairville County. And so we will provide them with the same services that we would provide our own clients here that we have on supervision. So our probation officer, Mike Richardson, will continue to meet with them. You know, help them gain access to services both here and then also in their hometown. You know, if they're in a rural area, he'll connect with somebody back there through the Veterans Court and provide that case management services. But Mike's role or our probation officer's role is one to provide probation services, but then also provide some case management to make sure that the veterans are service-connected and meeting the needs of the Veterans Court as well. So this would go again for three years. The total amount is a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. And I would just respectfully request that the board approve this agreement between Blue Earth County Community Corrections and the State of Minnesota.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, discussion?
Seems like a great program.
It has been. We've had a good, good relationship with the courts and with the service providers as part of Veterans Court. And Mike's been a very stable case manager for our department with the Veterans Court.
Good.
Very good.
Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, the agreement is approved. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Item number nine on our agenda, tab seven, is public work. Stefan, come forward, please, identify yourself for the record. Good morning.
Morning, Stefan.
Good morning.
Good morning, my name's Stefan Gantert. I'm the Assistant County Engineer. Today I have six items for your consideration. Ryan certainly apologizes for not being here today. He had a funeral to attend. So the first item I have is the consideration of the final contract payment for state aid project zero, zero, seven, six, one, one, zero, fourteen, and others, which is our two thousand, twenty-three Batuminous Overlay Contract that we completed last year. The project was completed by Minnesota Paving and Materials. Everything was satisfactory. Just took a little time to rectify or to resolve the final quantities. And so now we're coming to you with final payment, which is primarily just the retainage being released on the contract.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, the final payment is approved.
Thank you. Item number two is again another final contract payment. This one is for state aid project zero, zero, seven, six, one, two, zero, two, three, which was the County Road Twelve reconstruction from County Road twenty-six to the east, all the way up to the North County line on County Road Two by the Mankato Airport. This project was completed quite some time ago. There just took a little time, I think, for the. This project was completed quite some time ago. There just took a little time, I think, for the contractor to get resolution with all their subcontractors on their quantities, so finally getting around to getting their signatures and, uh, concurrence. So again, primarily just the retainage being released on this contract as well.
I'll move that.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion?
And how much was that?
The final payment. The final payment on that one was thirty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents.
No questions? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, the contract final payment is approved.
Thank you. The third item for your consideration is going to be the, got the abstracts here. The, um, contract award consideration for state aid project zero-zero-seven-five-ninety-eight-zero-three-five, which is for the County Road One-Forty-Six, um, bridge replacement. There were five bids received on this project, which is a good outcome. The engineer's estimate was seven-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars, and the low bid submitted by Everstrong Construction was six-hundred-and-seventy-two dollars and six-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars, which was almost eight, just under eight percent under the estimate. The other bids were from Minowa at nine-point-four-seven over the estimate, Icon Constructors eleven-point-two-two over the estimate, Graves Construction, twelve-point-eight-two over the estimate, and SM Henches and Son at nineteen-point-three-eight over the estimate. So, um, good result that our low bidder was under our estimate. Good pricing on this one. So we would recommend approval to Everstrong. I'll just note that Everstrong is relatively new to Blue Earth County. We have not worked with them before, uh, that I'm aware of. However, we did do some investigation and contacted some other counties where they've done work, and they apparently do excellent work. They're primarily, they, they were in building construction, so they do a lot of concrete flat work. They know their concrete. The, one of the comments I got from another contractor that's worked with them, that they actually are very meticulous and do a very good job, so which is good on a bridge.
Wonderful. I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second discussion?
I like the name, Everstrong.
Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, the bid is awarded.
Great, thank you. Uh, item number four is again related to that same project on County Road One-Forty-Six. This item is the, a local bridge replacement program grant agreement with MINDOT, agreement number one-zero-five-six-five-six-four. This is for, this is the agreement that you've probably seen before related to the bridge bond money that was received to fund a portion of this bridge. The bond amount is four-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seven dollars, which leaves a hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand-eight-hundred-and-seventy-six to be funded by the county. So, um, it's a great result. I think it's close to like seventy-five or eighty percent of the total project costs that we're that we're, uh, receiving and funding. Primary, mainly what they do is on a county road like this, they'll fund a hundred percent of the bridge cost itself. So the remaining cost is the approach grading, um, coming into the bridge. So we would recommend approval. There is, uh, there is the agreement, and then within the agreement, there is a resolution. So just requesting and recommending approval of both of those documents.
Keep the recommendation. Can we do them both at the same time?
I believe so.
I move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, um, discussion? Are we ready to vote? We'll be voting on both of these. This is one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, the, they both are approved.
Great, thank you. Next item is another, uh, bid consideration for contract award. This one is for the replacement of, uh, two box culverts. So this is just a county project. County Project Two-One-Seven-Four and County Project Two-One-Seven-Seven. Um, on County Road One-Seventy-four and One-Seventy-seven, existing boxes or existing culverts that are going to be replaced by box culverts. This project will be locally funded, um, as they do not qualify as bridges on our system. The estimate on this one was four-hundred-and-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars. I will note that that price does not include the boxes themselves. We did purchase the boxes outside of the contract, um, just to make sure we had them in time so that we could complete this project this fall. Unfortunately, there's still probably a twelve to sixteen-week delay on those box culverts, so we just wanted to make sure we had everything available to get these replacements done. The low bid was submitted by R and E Enterprises of Mankato at three-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, three-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-five-hundred-and-forty-three dollars and forty-eight cents, about eight-point-two-three under our estimate. The second bid from Selly Excavating was also under the estimate by about six percent. We did receive bids from Mathewitz at nine-point-seven-three over our estimate, Minowa Construction sixteen-point-three over our estimate, and Dirt Merchant at twenty-nine-point-two percent over our estimate. So a good spread of bids, quite a range. I think it's a testament to contractors that maybe have their plate full for the rest of the year versus those that have a little bit of capacity later in the year, so. But good bid results, so we would recommend approval to R and E Enterprises of Mankato.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, the bid is awarded to R and E.
Thank you. And the final item I have for your consideration is the professional engineering services for County Road Cassaf Fifteen and Twenty-Eight for reconstruction work in the city of Saint Clair that's planned for twenty-twenty-five. We did, um, obtain a proposal from Bolton and Mank, who is the city engineer. We did not go out for competitive solicitations on this one. But because the Bolton and, because Bolton and Mank is the city engineer for this Saint Clair, they requested that we proceed with them doing the design work for the city because a lot of the work is city underground work. This is pretty typical of what we've done. We did a similar thing in Eagle Lake. We've done something similar down in Good Thunder. So we, we proceeded with that, got the proposal from Bolton and Mank. Their proposal is based on time and materials not to exceed. So they've put an estimate on their hours, but they won't go over that without prior approval from us. And just as a reference, well, I should back up. This, this proposal from Bolton and Mank, which includes all the construction staking, contract administration, and inspection of the construction came out to, um, four-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand-five-hundred dollars, five-hundred-and-eight dollars. So it's a pretty significant contract, but over, about half of that is actually for the construction side of things. The other half is for the design work. The, just for reference, the project we did in Eagle Lake, which was not quite as complex as, as this in twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-one, was three-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty dollars. So it's within reason, so we would recommend approval of, um, these professional engineering services with Bolton Mank.
I'll move approval.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion?
Mr. Chair, Stefan, so this kind of takes a little workload off of your plate though, correct?
Correct.
So this, this isn't a, it isn't a technically a hard cost of this because it will save you a lot of manpower in your shop.
Correct.
And that's how we do this.
Correct, and a lot of the work that, the design work that's being done is, is somewhat specialized and out of our wheelhouse, so to speak, with the sewer and the water.
Yep.
Certainly, we've had discussions internally about the construction side of things, and we could manage the project. It's just looking at our workload next year, it's going to be a little bit challenging to be taking that on. But I think that option is still there with the way they structured this proposal by having the add alternates. We're approving all of them at this point, but I don't think there'd be any issue if we had capacity next fall to do the inspection of the roadway work to take that over and, and reduce our out-of-pocket costs.
Yeah, and I'm certainly supportive of this, uh, model because it worked really well in Eagle Lake. They're, they're there, they're on the ground, and then you guys are still following up and watching what they're doing. Especially when it comes to the pavement. We're responsible for the pavement at the end of the day. Nothing else, so.
And they have the continuity of the project, having been there while the utilities were being installed, and they develop the relationships with the landowners, so, um, there's some benefit to that, certainly.
Thank you.
Okay, are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried.
Great, thank you. Just a few informational items with project updates. County Road Thirteen from One-Sixty-Nine to County Road One that started last year, if you recall. The bridge is essentially complete at this point. All that's left to do on it is remove the forms, and then there's some deck grinding or planing that has to happen on that bridge, but they're going to wait to do that closer to the end of the project after, um, some of the hauling has happened on it so that we don't get too much dirt and other materials ground into the deck. Drainage pipe work is, uh, proceeding and should be done here by the end of June. Mathewitz is working on that, and they continue to do a lot of the grading simultaneously. And the good news for us out there is that the gas relocations are supposed to be done this week, so that'll open up areas that Mathewitz was holding off on doing their pipe crossings, so hopefully that goes well tomorrow and they can proceed with that and get things done here by the end of the month with the pipe. County Road Eleven, uh, for the, from the west county, uh, west county line to County Road Six. They're working on the drainage pipe there, proceeding from the west to the east. And grading work is also underway, again, primarily towards the west end of that project. The County Road Twenty-Six trail work that was left over from the roadway project that we did last year, that has started up. In fact, I just got an update that they're hoping to be paving tomorrow. I would, that might be a little aggressive, but maybe later this week or next week, they should be paving that trail, which would then allow them to start doing some of the topsoil and, and seeding, hopefully to wrap that up. They do have a, um, end-of-the-month completion date on that, so I think they're pushing hard towards that. County Road Eighty-Two or Victory from just south of Hoffman up to just south of Main Street. We did close that, um, yesterday.
Advance knows. Top of the discussion this morning.
There's a, that project is planned for completion August twenty-third, so it is a very tight window. We prescribed in the contract that the contractor, we expected them to work six days a week, ten hours a day. We knew we put a tight window on it, but we were really trying to hit that school out to school back in window. I think Dirt Merchant is contractor. They've, they've developed a game plan to achieve that, so I think they'll have a good, uh, it'll proceed very well. I, you know, a few little hiccups with the traffic control on day one, but we're working through those. You know, we, we're looking at making.
Misprinted signs, no.
Well, yeah, yeah, that was, that was a little snafu there, but, but I, we are looking at timing of the signal at Main Street because there was quite a long queue there on day one, so we're, you know, a lot of those things. We tell residents and we tell, you know, drivers that the first week is always a challenge. We need to let the traffic kind of readjust to the new, um, the new way and, and see where things land, and then we can make some adjustments, um, with signage if need be. The twenty-twenty-four bituminous overlays, those are planned to start, uh, next week, it sounds like. They primarily want to get going on the projects that have some, uh, concrete ADA improvements. And those are County Road Fifty-Five and Fifty-Six in Eagle Lake, and then County Road Nine over in Lake Crystal. We did tell them those needed to be complete before school's out, so I think that's the priority. The rest of the project, we gave them until, uh, early October, October eleventh to get that work done, trying to give them some flexibility. The, uh, County Road Twenty-Nine Bridge Replacement Project, really no update from last month. That plan is over to Cent, MINDOT Central Office. We're waiting on the MINDOT Cultural Resources Unit to do a re-review, um, of the environmental documents due to the hundred-and-fifty-foot extension of the project on one end. The good news is that that sixty-day window that they have to review it is coming up here next week, so hopefully, fingers crossed, we'll have some resolution here in the next week and a half. And then we'll have to see what kind, what our bidding schedule and construction schedule can look like. The County Road One-Forty-Six Bridge Replacement Project that you, um, awarded the contract earlier, that contractor plans to start here in late June, and they have an October fifteenth completion date. The box culverts, again, that were awarded, um, that work is scheduled in September, October, when the boxes become available from the, uh, supplier. We do have two other, some other box culvert projects. County Road Two, um, out for bids right now. There are two box culverts in that contract. That one will be a July third bid opening for consideration by the board on, uh, July eleventh. And then the County Road One-Fifty-seven Box Culvert, again, is a July third consider, uh, bid opening for July eleventh consideration. County Road Five from Riverfront Drive to Summit Avenue. American Engineering Testing and Blue Earth County staff are going to be performing some soil borings and pavement coring later in the month, um, and that will again require some partial lane closures, um, just for safety of the staff that's out there. This will be, if you recall, we were doing some concrete pavement evaluation last month. This will be a little less, um, extensive, so the lane closures will be more mobile and, and moving lane closures, so it shouldn't be quite as impactful. The County Road Fifteen and Twenty-Eight in Saint Clair, we talked about that, awarded the, uh, design contract, Bolton, to Bolton and Mank, and they'll be starting that immediately. Obviously, for twenty-twenty-five construction, they need to get going on that design. The, uh, County Road Ten from the west county line to County Road Twenty, which is a twenty-twenty-five construction project for us. That one we're designing in-house. The bridge is designed. We're working on the roadway prod, roadway plans leading up to that. I'd say we're at about seventy to seventy-five percent on that plan. Hope to be starting the right-of-way discussions here, um, in July sometime. County Road Forty Slope Repair, that design, again, is, is complete, as was reported last month. We just need to begin right-of-way discussions and submitting the MINDOT project memorandum and environmental documents. That one's kind of slipped to the back burner for now on us. We're, we're at a good point with it where we can pick that up here late summer, early fall and, and, uh, finish that out, finish that process out to get that ready for, uh, construction in twenty-twenty-five. County Road Ten from Vernon Center to One Mile East, which includes the, uh, bridge, the pin and hanger bridge there. We did select, uh, the engineering consultant with Seth, who, um, they actually have a local presence as well now, but they're a a bridge, um, designer who also has the ability to do some roadway design, so it's a somewhat specialized when you have to get both of those packaged into one contract. And they, they're planning to begin their design work here later this month as well. County Road Fourteen Box Culvert Bridge Replacement, that's one. We've submitted plans. We've received fund, local bridge replacement program funding for that, um, to the tune of a hundred-and-forty-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents of the total of about four-hundred-thousand-dollar project, so again, that's good. That frees up some money for us to do things elsewhere. But because of our workload in twenty-twenty-four, we're going to bid that here in twenty-twenty-four, but have it for construction early springs or late summer, late spring, early summer of twenty-twenty-five. And then the same, that same schedule will apply then to the County Road One-Fifty-Six Bridge Replacement, which again, we received, um, five-hundred-and-ninety-three-thousand-four-hundred dollars of the estimated seven-hundred-and-thirty-thousand total project cost. So again, a good chunk of that was, uh, funded through the local bridge replacement program, and that'll again be built in twenty-twenty-five. Just quick maintenance activities updates. We're finishing up cracked ceiling within the next few weeks. Should finish up our gravel resurfacing within the next few weeks as well. We started spraying guardrails to keep the weeds and the brush and the overgrowth down around those. And the crews continue to do tile intake, culvert repairs as needed as they are discovered. And we should finish out our first round of dust control in the next few weeks as well. We've had a lot of rain this, this May, um, which is good for our world because we're able to get a lot of the blading our gravel roads done when the weather cooperates. County Road One-Fifty-Six, Foot One-Fifty-Nine, apologize, was closed this week, um, due to water overtopping. And then the crews are beginning to start mowing the shoulders as well. The Rapid安Dam update, um, I think there was a memo that was included. Not a lot has changed. We did, we did have the, uh, annual onsite dam safety inspection, uh, May twenty-first. The FERC did provide their, uh, follow-up letter on June fifth, which which was pretty consistent with what it's been in the past few years as far as the monitoring that needed to be continued. And then the last update item I have for you is a vehicle sponsorship, an EV utility vehicle sponsorship that we are doing with Eagle Lake. We will be working with them to act as the sponsor for pass-through money, similar to we've done on other local road improvement project funds for different communities. For the, it's part of the carbon reduction program fund that the city applied for to purchase an electric utility vehicle. So there'll be a future agreement that'll come before we for that once we get a little further along. And that's all I have for updates. It seemed like a lot, but hopefully it was insightful.
That's not where's any more roads between Vernon Center and Good Thunder, west of Vernon Center. Got one more left, we'll have to go through Amboy.
Well, unfortunately, we're, when MinDOT closes Augusta and 22 and the bridge there, that's just going to be one more jab at travel, the traveling public in the area, but.
Be nice when it's completed.
It will be.
That's the worst part of it. They did the same thing in Eagle Lake a couple of years ago. They closed everything to get around. But at the end of the day, then it's all done and won't never have to worry about again, so that's.
All right, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Stefan.
Item number 10 on the agenda, tab eight, is the county attorney update. Megan, anything for us?
Mr. McDermott did submit the county attorney's report. If there's any specific questions, I can take those back and follow up on those.
Looks like a good report.
Yeah, I don't think I have anything.
All right, appreciate that. Item number 11, administration. Mr. Meyer, please.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for May 28th.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The minutes are approved.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. We're ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The bills are approved.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number 11 in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Just have informational items for the board's consideration today. First is a promotion of a technical support specialist to a network administrator in our information technology department. So we've initiated recruitment to refill that technical support specialist position, which we ultimately have now filled that position. And so our IT department is back to fully staffed. Then we had a resignation of a social worker in our child protection area and human services. So we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. We also had a resignation of a social worker, a care coordinator in our public health waivered service program area. And so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. We also have filled a couple of correctional officer positions, part-time positions in the jail. And then a resignation was received from a senior account clerk in our finance department. So we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. We also had a resignation of a probation officer two in our community corrections department and have initiated recruitment to refill that. And then lastly, we have initiated recruitment to fill a waste and recycling planner position in our property and environmental resources department. So that's what I have under our human resources. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay, you.
Then tab 12 is a memo regarding a tobacco license for the Eagle Express in Eagle Lake. The store has recently been sold, and the new owners are applying for the tobacco license. And so recommending approval of this license effective immediately through the end of the year.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The license is approved.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, then tab 13 in your packet is the financial status report for May 31st. This is when we start to see our first half property taxes show up in the financial report. And so under revenue, the local tax levy line shows $23.6 million of taxes were taken in. Our total revenue is set at the now $55 million compared to expenses at $48.1 million. So we kind of reverse that trend of expenses exceeding revenue with the first half taxes being receded in. We are running a little ahead in terms of contracts and fees on the expenditure lines, mostly because of County Road 13 activity happening a little earlier. And we'll continue to see that contract and fees line grow as the work that Stefan just reported on takes place. Otherwise, things are rolling along pretty well. I would maybe just draw your attention back up into the revenue side. The interest on investments continue to run strong compared to our budget. Are down a little bit from last year in terms of receipts, but that is helping our overall budget to see the return on our fund balance in terms of those investments. Under the enterprise fund, which is the Ponderosa landfill, you'll see we have just under $2 million of revenue against just under $2.1 million of expenses. So we are running a little behind there, but you'll notice that we have had some large machinery that we have purchased this year. So those are kind of one-time costs showing up in the report. The second page shows the cash and investment balances. Towards the top, you'll see the total available funds are $86.4 million against a six-month operating needs of $62.5 million. Again, with the first half taxes being received, our total available funds are a little high at this point. Down towards the bottom, you'll see the total county funds available are $148.5 million. And you'll see the list of dedicated funds, which certainly, if there are any questions on those, I could try and address that. But that would be the report. But again, be happy to answer any questions that the board might have.
Questions or comments?
No questions. Yep, looks good.
Thank you, Bob. Item number 12 on our agenda, commissioners' reports on committees. Vance, would you like to start this time around?
Bet. On the 28th, after our board meeting, I attended a post-session legislative forum downtown. On the 29th, I had a Blueworth Nicola County Safe Roads, which is towards Zero Death. On the 31st, I had a NACO credentials meeting. I had, I attended a retirement for a Blueworth County employee, and I had a farm advisory meeting for the community farm that afternoon. On Monday, the 3rd, I had a MRCI board meeting. On the 4th, I had a NACO monthly membership meeting. On the 5th, we had a department head meeting. And I had a NACO transportation committee meeting. On the 6th, I had a MinDOT South Central Committee meeting, which is another regional towards Zero Death. On the 7th, I had a NACO credentials committee meeting as we're coming up to our conference. Didn't have anything yesterday, so I'm done with my report. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Kent, please.
I had a relatively light schedule the last couple of weeks. We had a couple of budget meetings with the attorney and the sheriff's office. Had a good conversation there. I attended department head and planning and zoning. We had several items on the list on planning and zoning, but nothing controversial, and should be here at the next meeting. That's my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Park.
Okay, it's relatively late too. Did have on Tuesday, May 28th, we had the 2024 post-session legislative forum. At, what was it, the Pint's place? And that was all the legislature there from the surrounding area over there. It was quite informative. And on May 31st, it had a retirement of a person there at Public Works. And then on June 4th, had MAPLE, Mankato Area Planning Organization. And that was the last one for Paul Vogel. So kind of gave him a little send-off. He's going to be moving out to Washington State. Going to get as far away as possible. But he's done a really good job through the years. And of course, you probably saw it in the free press, but with MAPLE, he's very instrumental in it. So beginnings in the progress, so he'll be missed. He's been, was, I think, really good for the, you know, the projects and everything he worked on in our area. That concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
All righty, May 28th, I too attended the GMG Legislative Wrap-Up. May 29th, Bob and I went to a Region 9 meeting of county officials. May 30th was FICA for NACO. June 5th, I went to department heads. And yesterday, I had two meetings with TDS, the policy and county class meetings. And that's my report.
Thank you. For me, since the May 28th board meeting, that afternoon, we had three landowner meetings, JD 23, 39, and 40, which coincided with the three hearings we had this morning. Then I also attended the GMG Legislative Forum. May 30th, I participated in the ISG Spring Tour. Very good projects. We looked a lot at different water storage projects, two-stage ditches. They did a very informal, informative session. Attended Mike Samuelson's retirement on the 31st. June 4th, met with the sheriff and county attorney as we look at upcoming budgets. Also attended the June 5th department head meeting. On June 6th, Drainage Work Group stakeholders tied in with AMC. Had a call for the upcoming DWG meeting this week. And then on June 7th, I represented the county at the All Seasons Arena groundbreaking. And that concludes my report. At this time, that concludes our agenda. I would ask for a motion to recess.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of recess, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. We are recessed.